Would you all please rise for the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation under God, in the name of the Constitution, justice for all. Okay, good morning again. It's November 7th, 2023. I saw no amendments to the agenda other than the workshop. And then we all received the minutes in your packets. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections to those minutes? There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second?
There's a second. Okay, thank you. I just will say one thing. There was a constituent that emailed us about some stuff and that I believe is all correct in there now. So all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Recognition of interested citizens limited to five minutes per person or subject. Is there anybody here that would like to speak during our open forum? Yeah, come on up to the podium over here. Absolutely. Can you hit the green button? It's probably like that. Right at the base, there's a little. Thank you.
Just want to talk to you. I came here to talk to you about a property that neighbors to my addition to my property. And Tom Wolf is probably a little familiar with this because I spoke with him in the past about it. It's in regards to the John Gallagher property.
Can you just give us your name and address quick here?
My name is Scott Mann. I live in New Market Township. Address is 23495 Grandview Trail.
Got it.
And so anyhow, I'm here to talk to you about their neighboring property, John Gallagher property at 23631 Natchez Avenue. That property is owned by our one rural residential. And in 2008, they took the county to court. And they, because they wanted to operate outside of that, the zoning ordinance is there. And it was after the, I don't know, it took a while in court. And in 2013, they came to an agreement with the county and Scott County and the Gallers agreed that they would allow conditional use of mining on the property. And I've also got a packet that I could have made for everyone if they want to see some of this information. And I'll go through it so you don't have to fumble through it. But if you want to look at it in the future, feel free. And I don't know if I got enough packets.
Hand them to Michelle here in the purple. Thank you, Scott.
Oops. So anyhow, as I was saying, they're operating outside of their zone, their, you know, their agreement. And that's the ironic part is that they actually agreed to conform to mining. And now they're operating a commercial dumping operation there. And when they reached the agreement of just mining, I've lived at the property since about 2001. So I've watched it all go down. And I moved there. They were doing, it's a farm that do the mining. It was pretty small. There was no, you know, no inconvenience. And, you know, you see a dump truck once in a while. No big deal. So after they reached the agreement, and I've got the agreement, it says the wording judgment that declares plaintiff's mining operation on the property to be legal nonconforming use under Scott County zoning ordinance, which use may continue under appropriate and lawful conditions of the zoning ordinance related to legal nonconforming property. And I will just quickly read you the definition of the mining in the Scott County website. It was also provided to me from Scott County. The mining use, the definition of mine is the extraction of sand, gravel, rock, black dirt, peat soil, and other materials from the land and removal thereof and the site as regulated by chapter 10 in this ordinance. Now, nowhere does it mention that they can be importing material. And that's where the traffic and, you know, the reason I'm here today is because now it is, it's very heavy. I know there's trucks coming there all the time. I've seen them as late at midnight on Sunday night. I've seen them at 3:30 in the morning when I get up to go to the bathroom. Seen them at 5:00 a.m. So it's just, it's kind of like the wild, wild west out there. And I brought this to the attention of the zoning department. And also I met with the county attorney, Kurt Whitman. And Martin Schmitz was supposed to be there, but apparently he was out sick that day. But he does know about this. And so when I met with them, I also provided them a thumb drive that has photos of trucks lining up to dump and hydro vacs they're dumping. And so they're aware of this. So it's not a matter of proof. I mean, they're aware it's going down and they're operating out of the zoning. And everything I'm going to present to you is not my opinion. I've got Minnesota statutes and things off the Scott County website that I'll refer to this. So it's nothing that I'm just making up and cooking up here. It's just all things that are, you know, documented. And you can look it up. And I've provided some copies of the materials I gave you. So where it went on to is that the Scott County, they did send them, the zoning department did send them a letter on July 10. And it says, "The office continues to receive multiple complaints regarding the truck traffic and dumping on the property. Hydro vac trucks importing and discarding materials onto your property is the use that did not exist on your property prior to the adoption of the county ordinance that regulated mining and importation of materials onto the property. Therefore, this activity is considered an expansion of use and requires interim use permit." So does that make sense to anybody that they should be allowed to do that even when they're already operating out of the, you know, the use, the definition of the zoning for our one residential? Anybody? Does that make any sense? Because I'm asking that. I'm not being sarcastic. It makes no sense to me.
And we're going to take your information today, Scott, and we're going to talk to our administrator, and we'll talk to our attorney and our planning and zoning, and we'll make sure that things are getting done correctly.
Okay. I know I'm going to throw a lot at you today. So what I'll do is I'll come back to another board meeting in about a month. And you can tell me where you're at and how this has moved forward. But can you at least tell me that you won't offer him an interim use permit in the time?
Okay.
I think you're making an assumption, if I could, just real quick, Mr. Chair, that when somebody does something and then the county says, "To do what you're doing, you really need something else," that doesn't mean they're automatically going to get the something else, you know, the interim use permit. Just because the county said, "To do what you're doing, you need this," doesn't mean that they will be successful. You know, that's an assumption.
Yeah, it is at this point. It probably is. But the problem is, this has been going on for over a year. And it took them almost 12, almost eight, nine, 10 months before they did initial inspection of the property. Now, I do zoning and ordinance compliance. I work for the city of Minneapolis. So I'm no stranger to this. I know what it's all about. So when dealing with the zoning department and the county attorney Kurt Whitman, they are like the wizard that has behind the cape, you know. We pulled back the curtain. We know what's going on. I've offered to bring many, I brought a thumb drive with all sorts of photos, but I know we don't want to waste everyone's time on that. But I also provided them with a thumb drive with some photos of the dumping of dump trucks lining up, hydro vac trucks. And like I say, it's just, it's constant noise. It's like living at a construction site all day long, every day. And it doesn't go away. You know, they're not, they're not ceasing doing what they're doing. And there's no, I don't understand why the county isn't doing more about this. And so I'd like to go a little further. I don't want to get too much off the business here. So Tom, Martin, when you met with Martin Schmitz, he told you everything was okay at the property after the inspection?
I believe they looked at it, yeah.
Yeah, because that's what you told me that it was okay.
Yep.
But they continue to dump there and keep the commercial dumping operation going there. So.
And these are hydro vaxxed? Are they cleaning roads or something?
Yeah, have you seen those hydro vac tanks that they go around and they do utility digging for lines and pipes? And it's a less invasive way for them to go and, you know, push their wires and their pipes through and stuff. And again, I'm not going to talk out of school because I've never done any hydro vac thing. So it's just a little knowledge I know.
So Scott, so I think we have enough to work off of here. Leslie, is that, Leslie here is our administrator. So I think we have enough to work off of.
Hey, Kate, well, I do have some statutes, you know, from the Minnesota state that tells it, you know, the direction of how this can go. And I'd like to, I gave you copies of those too. So I'd like to go through those real quick if I could.
Okay.
The first one is, it's from the Office of Reviser of Statutes, Minnesota statutes. It's statute 2394.394.37, the enforcement. And there's a lot of things there, but it says other remedies by the county attorney in the event of violation or a threatened violation of sections, any ordinances, regulation, or other official control adopted here under the board or any member thereof, in addition to other remedies made instituted property act, appropriate actions or proceedings to prevent, restrain, correct, or abate each violations or threatened violations. And here's the, here's the part it says, "And this is the duty of the county attorney to institute such action." Now, after them knowing about this for over a year, the county attorney has instituted no enforcement on this at all. Does anyone find that a little long time to go on?
Let me go to, our county attorney wants to say something here. Ron?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The staff of the county, including my office, did do an investigation into this and concluded that there were no violations. They did send out a letter with that conclusion to the parties. They went out there for an inspection. They had multiple meetings. They did staff research. And there was no solid waste violation. They even contacted the relevant state agencies to see if they wanted to get involved. The state had no interest. So there was an investigation conducted and there were found to be no violations.
Okay. And so the dumping at the nighttime and stuff, is that within the parameters here?
They were importing material to the mining operation to use for reclamation purposes. The timing of that, I couldn't tell you right now, but they did do the investigation and concluded that there were no zoning violations.
Okay, all right.
Well, you refer to reclamation. That means they're bringing back dirt that they've extracted and kind of filling back. That's not the case. You can go on Google Earth and see it's just dumping, dumping, dumping. They're using that as a scapegoat or wording, you know, but there's no reclamation going on there. It's just dumping. So the way you're explaining that is not true at all. And I can provide a number of photos, evidence. It's all they do is dump there. Like I said, when I lived there, when they were just doing mining, what they were allowed to do and which they, the agreement with Scott County entails. Now it's all dumping. It's become a commercial dump site. And there's plenty of evidence there to prove that. So you can look at what you want and ignore the evidence, but the evidence is there.
Okay. Then what we'll do is we'll take another look at this here, Scott, and thank you for coming in today. We'll take another, kick the tires again on it and make sure everything is dotted and crossed properly. And we'll keep you informed. I'll either call you or somebody from planning and zoning, but.
Yeah, I'm going to go back to another board meeting, but I don't agree with what the attorney said. I always said under the agreement with mining that now they can start dumping there. And again, it's not reclamation. They're not, you know, that means you're taking out 100 tons of material, putting 100 tons back. They're not doing that. They're just dumping, dumping, dumping.
Okay.
So that's above and beyond their agreement.
Could you leave your phone number on that piece of paper too then? Is there a sign in there?
No, not where I'm at.
Okay. Did you sign in over on this side of the?
It's behind you, Scott, please.
Could you put your phone number on it just to make sure we have that?
But I'll come back to another board meeting because I'd like to know where this goes.
We want to call you. I want to call you.
Been there for over a year, and I know it's being swept on their carpet. Multiple people have complained on this. And the way the zoning department has moved on it, you know, without enforcement, why is there a zoning department? I, like I said, I work for the city of Minneapolis and do code enforcement. And trust me, if we weren't doing our job doing enforcement, we wouldn't have a job because they would need us. So why is it that Kurt Whitman and Martin Schmitz are not doing their job? And that's admissible.
Okay. Thank you for coming in. I appreciate it. We'll keep.
Okay, well, I'll be back because I want to see where this goes.
Yep, sounds good.
About a month, I'll iron it out, and I'll come back to the next, you know, first meeting next month. And I'd like a better answer of why they can do reclamation when they're not, you know, that's clearly a scapegoat. And so that's what they're hanging all the value of their argument on. And it's not reclamation. It's just dumping, clearly dumping. And I can provide that. And I cannot provide you with any proof of reclamation because they're not taking any dirt out of there.
Okay.
Okay, thanks, everyone.
That's all you have then?
Well, I was being cut off.
No, no, no. I give five minutes normally, but we've gone 12 or 13. So you've gotten way more than.
I do have more. I could, the website, I could go after this all day is why. I've got examples right from the zoning department where people are inquiring about, can I do this on my property? And they, you know, I can write it for you. And it says that they, no, you cannot. And somehow they're able to do that. And I'd like to know what and why they have the entitlement to do this on neighboring properties that they affect.
Yep. We have enough now to go on here. We will dig into it.
Okay. Well, you've got my number. I called you before. So you can call me if you have any questions or if I can provide any more information. Like I said, I've got a thumb drive full of all sorts of pictures and photo evidence.
Good deal.
And nothing on that thumb drive that they're doing reclamation as far as taking dirt out of the property. It's all dumping, dumping, dumping.
Yep. Thank you for coming.
Okay, thanks for my time.
Have a good day. Is there anybody else who would like to speak at open forum? Anybody? Nobody? Okay.
Mr. Chair, I do want to add one item. I wanted to note that we are going to add an item to talk about the Met Council governance at our work session.
Okay.
We received an email from AMC late yesterday asking for a little bit of input on a couple items. So we're going to add that to our work session agenda.
Okay. Great. So we will do that. Now we will move into consent agenda. And these items are deemed noncontroversial and normally pass in one motion. 5.1, adopt resolution number 2023-252, authorizing entering into an agreement with Alliant Engineering, Inc. for the County Highway 16 project. 5.2, adopt resolution number 2023-255, authorizing final payment to McNamara Contracting Incorporated for the 2022 pavement preservation projects. 5.3, adopt resolution number 2023-262, approving a rezone of 2.85 acres from I-1 Rural Industrial to C-1 General Commercial Camping World Holdings Incorporated applicant and FRHPR LLC property owner. 5.4, adopt resolution number 2023-263, approving a conditional use permit to operate a contractor yard preliminary and final plan of JL Tice Edition and Three Way Grading Agreement, Greystone Construction Company applicant and JL Tice Land Holdings LLC property owner. 5.5, adopt resolution number 2023-264, approving a conditional use permit to operate equipment, office service contractor yard Equipment Share, Inc. applicant and Mezzlingbring Construction and Engineering, Inc. property owner. 5.6, adopt resolution number 2023-272, authorizing entering a contract with Motorola Solutions for radio maintenance. 5.7, adopt resolution number 2023-273, authorizing entering a contract with Johnson Controls Incorporated and a budget amendment for chiller replacement. 5.8, adopt resolution number 2023-275, authorizing an amendment to the Inmate Calling Solutions LLC agreement. 5.9, adopt resolution number 2023-278, accepting a bid for the sale and removal of a single family house from 22801 Panama Avenue. 5.10, approve the appointment of Jeffrey White to the Special Board of Appeal and Equalization for 2024 and 2025. 5.11, approve payroll processing of personnel actions. Those are the 11 items on consent. Are there any we'd like to have pulled for discussion or a different vote? And if not, is there a motion for those?
I make a motion to approve the consent.
There's a motion to approve those 11 items. Is there a second?
Second.
And there is a second. Any more discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We're going to move to 6.1, recognizing November 6, to adopt resolution number 2023-274, recognizing November 6 to the 12th, 2023 as Operation Green Light to shine a light of hope and support for veterans. Good morning.
Good morning, commissioners. I am here today to briefly brief you on Scott County becoming a green light for veterans county. Operation Green Light for Veterans is a program that was created by the National Association, by National Association of Counties in conjunction with the National Association of County Veteran Service Officers to light up local government buildings and entities with a green light to show support for the veterans in the community as well as encouraging the citizens of the county to display a green light in some fashion in their businesses or homes, simply to show support for the veterans that have served our country and now live in our communities. I have the resolution here. Do I just jump into that?
Yes, absolutely.
So it's resolution number 2023-274, recognizing November 7 through the 12th, 2023, as Operation Green Light to shine a light of hope and support for veterans. Whereas the residents of Scott County have great respect, admiration, and the utmost gratitude for all the men and women who have selflessly served our country and this community in the armed forces. And whereas the contributions and sacrifices of those who have served in the armed forces have been vital in maintaining the freedom and way of life enjoyed by our citizens. And whereas Scott County seeks to honor individuals who have made countless sacrifices for freedom by placing themselves in harm's way for the good of all. And whereas veterans continue to serve our community in the American legions, veterans of foreign wars, religious groups, civil service, and by functioning as county veteran service officers in 29 states to help fellow former service members access more than $52 billion in federal health disability and compensation benefits each year. And whereas approximately 200,000 service members transition from civilian communities, or transition to civilian communities annually. And whereas an estimated 20% increase of service members will transition to civilian life in the near future. And whereas studies indicate that 44% to 72% of service members experience high levels of stress during transition from military to civilian life. And whereas active military service members transitioning from military service are at a high risk for suicide during their first year after military service. And whereas the National Association of Counties encourages all counties, parishes, and boroughs to recognize Operation Green Light for veterans. And whereas Scott County appreciates the sacrifices of our United States military personnel and believes specific recognition should be granted. Now, therefore being resolved by the Board of Commissioners and Commissioners in and for the county of Scott, Minnesota, that with designation as a green light for veterans county, Scott County hereby declares today through Veterans Day, November 11, 2023, a time to salute and honor service and sacrifices of our men and women in uniform transitioning from active service. Being further resolved that in observance of Operation Green Light, Scott County encourages its citizens in patriotic tradition to recognize the importance of honoring all those who made immeasurable sacrifices to preserve freedom by displaying green lights in a window of their place of business or residence from November 7 through the 12th, 2023.
Okay. Thank you. There's a motion. Is there a second? And a second, is there any discussion on that?
Mr. Chair, Derek, thanks for bringing this forward. I think it's important to be part of this national effort to recognize veterans, but also to showcase and remind our Scott County veterans of your office and the work that you do and the resources we have here for all veterans in Scott County. I think it's great that we have the lunch today, that it's all coinciding in the same week. And thank you for that. And thank you for your office's work.
Thank you. And it was, it took a lot of people to get that done. We worked a lot with the facilities department. This year will be fairly basic in the amount of green, but going forward, we will increase that in future years.
And now you've given me a reason to stop at Home Depot today. Darn it. And we've got green lights here. So anyhow, there's a motion and a second. Is there any more discussion? Being none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
So, Mr. Chairman, I just want to add that Derek and Danielle should really be thanked. We had an issue come up with the lunch this week at the last minute. And then those two worked diligently to come up with a solution and are doing a lot of work themselves today to make this happen. So thank you to both of you for that effort.
Thank you. Good deal. They're putting aprons on, I see.
They basically are.
Okay. So thank you for that. So we're going to move on to 7.1. And that is an informational presentation from the Southern Valley Alliance. Kristi, yep, come on up.
Good morning. My name is Kristi Larson. I'm the executive director at Southern Valley Alliance. Thank you so much for having me here today. Just wanted to come and give an update about Southern Valley, our services, and our very exciting upcoming move nearby. So as you know, just a little brief background about Southern Valley. We've been around for over 40 years. We're the only domestic violence service provider for both Scott and Carver counties. And during those 41 years, we have served over 23,000 individuals with services between the two counties. Our mission is to assist victims and end domestic violence in our local community. And some of our programs include our 24/7 crisis line, which is free, confidential, for anyone to use. We encourage people to call even if they just have questions. We get a lot of calls from concerned family members and friends, coworkers, and we're always there to answer those questions and provide resources and support. We have a number of different crisis intervention programs. We will help people with safety planning. We also work a lot with the county attorney's office and assist victims with writing HROs or the OFPs. And we'll assist them through the court process. So we can go and provide some emotional support to them as well while they're going through their court process. We recently started some medical advocacy as well at St. Francis. So that is when a victim is coming into the emergency department with domestic violence injuries, we are able to do a telehealth with them. And we can be there with them while they're getting their exam and provide them with support and resources and then set up an appointment with them to come into our office to further assist them after they exit St. Francis. Just this spring, we started our transitional housing program. So as we all know, housing is, you know, a concern for a lot of residents of the counties, especially when you're fleeing a domestic violence situation. A lot of times, your finances are very tight, if they exist at all. And so we really find that housing is our number one issue that we face with the clients that we're working with. So we wrote a grant for the office for violence against women. And we received that this spring. And so we were able to commence this transitional housing program. So we have four units in Carver County, two in Scott County right now. And those are scattered site apartments throughout the counties where clients and their children can come live in those apartments for up to 12 months. We are providing assistance with rent and utilities and then really intensive case management during that time to just lift them up and help them become stable and move on to safe housing after that. We also provide support groups. So we do two of those every week, one in Shakopee and then one virtual option. And then we do a lot of community outreach, education to community groups, education in our schools, and just getting the word out there about our services and domestic violence in general. Just a couple of our Scott County partnerships. We partner a lot with our law enforcement agencies. That's all 10 of them throughout the two counties, but really appreciate everything that they do for our organization. Every time law enforcement is out on a call, they're going to also send us a report of that domestic violence incident so we can follow up with the victim. In the last year, we implemented the lethality assessment with our law enforcement partners. So it's an enhanced screening that all of the law enforcement officers are doing when they're out on a domestic violence call. And if that screen comes back high, the officer is going to call from the scene with the victim to a Southern Valley Alliance advocate. And we can make that immediate connection with the victim and immediately begin the safety planning process and get them safe and secure and connected with our organization. We also work a lot with our county attorney's office, and we really appreciate that partnership. There's great communication there. We work with the victim witness and a lot of the different attorneys there. So we appreciate that partnership greatly. And we just received a grant through Scott County Housing for some housing stability funds for the clients that we serve. So again, providing them with maybe it's one month of a rent payment, help with a mortgage payment, something if they are really seeing issues with potentially becoming homeless that we can step in and assist them so they don't become homeless. Just a couple of statistics. Over the last two years, calls to our crisis line have more than doubled. So we are seeing a severe increased need for our services. And you can see here, in over the last 40 years, we have provided assistance for over 14,095 Scott County. years, we have provided assistance for over 14,095 Scott County residents. That doesn't include people that we are helping on our Crisis Line because we're typically not getting that demographic information from them. When they're calling, we're not collecting all of the data, so we don't necessarily know where they live, so that number is a lot higher. So, as you can see, domestic violence is in every community. We like to think that it isn't, but that's why Southern Valley Alliance exists, that we can step in and assist these people that need our services. So, our very exciting news, as you can see, we have had our new building in construction process over the last year, just down the street, and we are going to be opening that January 1st of 2024. So, moving in toward the last week or so of December and then beginning services right away in January there. So, we've been in Belle Plaine for over 40 years. We are moving all of our services to Shakopee just for the accessibility for all of the clients that we serve and partnering with other organizations, whether it be Scott County or it be other nonprofits, it's really just going to be greatly accessible and a great asset for the community. So, we are just very, very excited about that and look forward to sharing information about our ribbon cutting and everything in the spring, and we'll invite you over to the new facility so you can see that. And just a couple of different ways that we invite our community to help. We are always willing to come out to speak or provide a training. We ask that people follow and share our information. We do a lot of social media educational posts. We have Crisis Line posters that are up in a lot of different businesses and organizations throughout the community. A great way to reach victims where they can pull off one of the little tear strips and have our number and information for whenever they need to access that. We rely a lot on our volunteers, so if people want information about volunteer opportunities, they can visit our website at svamn.org and also learn more about donating your time, talent, and treasure on our website as well. And those are our websites, but that is all the information I have for you today. I wanted to open up and see if you have any questions or want more information.
Any questions or comments? Commissioner Ulrich.
This may be an unnecessary comment. I'm hoping that you feel fully able to and encouraged to post needs to your clients to the Fish Network. You know, don't hesitate at all.
Definitely. We utilize that resource frequently, so appreciate it.
All right. Any other questions or comments? I see Commissioner Brennan?
I just want to thank you for being here and the work that you're doing in Scott County and for the residents here. Look forward to having you as a neighbor in the area, and the building looks beautiful, and I know it's taken a lot of work, so congratulations on the upcoming move.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Breckie.
Well, I'd just say, Dido, thank you. It's especially the last year, it seems that the outreach to the community, the visibility has improved so much, so congratulations on that, and Kristi and her board had their board meetings at my law office, so I get to just hear things going on a lot, so it's been fun to witness that, and thank you for your work. One thing I've been thinking about recently, and I know the organization has really worked to be inclusive about what domestic violence means, you know, it's not our stereotypical picture, even though we do, it's important to protect women who are in domestic violence situations, but I think about how we're seeing, especially in our county work, more domestic violence among and against elders and adult protection, that type of thing, and I think there's some room for us to be talking about that and making sure that your resources, your organization's resources are utilized in those situations too. So, looking forward to that conversation that maybe has been happening already, but I think it can happen to a greater degree.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Can I just ask one? Oh, go ahead, Commissioner Beer.
Yeah, I just wanted to double down. The visibility has been amazing from those little tear-offs I see at all the gas station shopping boards and the little cork boards in the back or plastic signs in people's yards, and that's going to go a long way to reaching and hopefully stamping this out. We're trying to, well, you are trying to work yourself out of a job, right?
I mean, that'd be great.
Wouldn't that be awesome? I want to wish you good luck with that.
Thank you.
I have a feeling we might see you next year, but, so good job on getting that, getting the word out, because that's a big, that's really, really big.
And I was just going to ask, sorry, you're a 501(c) three?
Yes.
You are, okay. And so where would somebody send a check to? What address would they send?
Sure.
This is a good plug you could make.
Yes, wonderful. You can always visit our website at svamn.org, and that has our information on it. Right now, we're still operating out of Belle Plaine, so it's 551 East Park Street, Belle Plaine, Minnesota, 56011.
Perfect, okay. Send them some money. Yeah, go ahead, Ron.
I'm going to also put in a plug for SVA. Domestic violence has always been a priority in my office, and it's been one of my passions to help put her out of a job, and myself, unfortunately, I don't think that's ever going to happen, but we do work closely, and I think having them here in Shakopee is only going to increase our visibility, increase victims' access to. So, they do do great work, and I would encourage everybody that can contribute to them or use their services to do that. And they also have a fundraiser going on right now that you didn't mention, but their purple, November is the domestic violence month, and all of our law enforcement agencies have put together, have got their police patches made in purple, and those are available on their website to purchase for anyone, the public. So, my office is going to actually buy all of them and put them in a shadow box and have that displayed on my office. So, this one again, again, the lethality assessment that she talked about, great tool, not only helps their office but my office when we get an individual in custody, we can inform the judge of the dangers, enhance dangerous possibility, and also what was really, what's really crucial is she talked about the housing situation, the financial situation. For those of you that may be familiar with domestic violence, one of the biggest issues we have with, excuse me, victims recanting is financial, because they think into themselves they can't, they can't survive without this individual, so we have recanting situations. So, having that, those services and those resources available to victims is crucial, so thank you for having those services available.
Okay. Good. Any other questions or comments from anybody? Anyone? Okay.
The Purple Patch Program information is up on the screen here, and then there's also some flyers toward the back. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much for coming in today.
Really appreciate it.
So, we are going to move on to item eight, Committee Reports and Commissioner Updates. Commissioner Ulrich.
I have a list, and I'm going to talk about just one, and we're going to talk about it in our workshop, but, and you might guess that this is the Met Council Governance that I'm going to do some more commentary on. You know, there's the Legislative Commission that has been put together to study governance and also potentially reallocating some of the responsibilities of the Met Council, and they've been meeting, and I've got two different committees that parallel that, one put together by AMC and one put together by MICA, so I'm getting a couple doses of this, two or three doses of this every month, and, you know, the idea that there'd be a complete start over restructure of the Met Council seems kind of unlikely, but there was something that came out of our last meeting that I think would be pretty good, and that is a direct appointment of the current Met Council members from the community that they represent. In other words, instead of being appointed by the governor, they would be appointed by a local process, so say, for example, Wendy Wolf would then be appointed by a combination of Scott and Dakota County because she's our representative, and so we would, in the future, maybe reappoint her or appoint somebody else, you know, if she's retiring or whatever, but we would, we would appoint that person, not the governor, so that person would be accountable to the local community, which would be a huge plus, and that's not a wholesale change to the Met Council, it's just a change with the appointment process. And then also staggered terms is all, you know, that's kind of like a no-brainer for everybody, you know, it's been talked about so much, the staggered terms that are not consistent with the governor, they would overlap from one governor to another, you know, so that's why the stagger would be there. That's being considered. On the TAB itself, there were four positions that most of my time, or a lot of my time on the TAB, were ex officio, they were non-voting. They are now voting, and those four give less strength to the elected members that are on the TAB. There's, and those positions are like the airport, Midtown Airports Commission, the Pollution Control Agency, MINDOT, and I can't remember the fourth, but there are four, and so the idea is that perhaps those should be returned to ex officio, so it gives more weight to the elected on the TAB. And then real, this is another category, reallocation of some duties, so the question, the main one has been, should the Met Council have transit governance and transit operation? And many are saying no, and how does this play out? I'll give you an example. MBTA was asked to submit a bid for service to Lakeville in the past, and Metro Transit was also submitting a bid, so you could see how MBTA would have no chance because the Met Councils got their own bid in there, and how would another organization compete? And in that process, they didn't even count the, they didn't have an apples-to-apples comparison, they counted some things differently in their operation versus MBT's operation, so it was really an unfair process. That's just one way how that doesn't, doesn't work. And so, but I would also say, a lot of times people say, well, let's, they say transit governance, transit operation, they forget transportation in that equation, and I have been telling the group, we have as much profit, maybe more, with the transportation that Met Council controls, but through the transportation policy plan, and I don't need to go into the weeds on that, but some of these things we're going to talk about in our workshop because the two, the study groups, they want feedback from the counties on this going forward. So, that's my big commentary. I'll give the list of things. 18th, the TAB, 23rd, AMC Met Council Advisory Board, the same day, the joint Shakopee-Scott County Board meeting, the 25th, MBTA Board meeting, 27th, MICA, well, say something on MBTA Board meeting. I would typically have been in position to go from Secretary of Treasury to Vice Chair and then Chair, and I said, you know, I've been there, done that several times, let's get some new people into the rotation. So, I know, I know Stacy Crakes from Savage has put in her name to get into the rotation, so we're going to get some new blood in the rotation, which I think is good. I was willing to do it, but I, but I really wanted new people. The first, the Parks Commission, the second, monthly touch base with the administrator, and then a CDA meeting with Savage, and I think the CDA is going around and meeting with all the city councils, and I don't know if they're meeting with townships or not, but they're coming your way, if they haven't already. The third, Scale Executive Committee meeting, and the sixth, another Met Council, AMC Met Council Advisory Committee meeting. That's the end of my report.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Beer.
Sure. Start with the 10-26 Fish Board meeting, which was the first time we've been back in person for quite some time, so it was just good to see everyone's face again and have conversations, and it just goes a long way to, you know, just making this organization strong, and part of the, of that board meeting was talking about, how do we make this thing? It's already strong. How do you make it stronger? How do you grow it? How do you make it more self-sufficient? How do you, so that was a, that was a big topic of the day. More work to be done on that, but it was just good to see everyone in person and talk about that we're all, I think, getting to that same, same point of growing and becoming self-sufficient. On the 30th, I attended the AMC District meeting. You got me down there. It was a good time. You might imagine that Met Council was a topic of discussion at that particular meeting. We had, you brought up MICA, there was, there was, forget who the individual, who was the president, I believe, of MICA, who was a commissioner, but also at the AMC meetings at Stan.
At Stan.
And so, just having that discussion of like, making sure that those two groups, on whatever issue that we're wanting to push, that those two groups are also of the like-mindedness to be one tip of the spear instead of two or three prongs, so that was a, I don't think there was any particular, Jody was there as well, so she may comment on this, but don't think there were any things that were super different, but there was, it was enough of a conversation to make sure that those two groups are on the same page, so that as you push forward on some of these Met Council Governance things, there's one voice, and it's a loud and strong voice, and there are all kinds of other legislative things talked about, so yeah.
Just to comment on that, that questioner, obviously, I attend both the AMC and MICA, and in the AMC group, there was a little bit of crabiness about MICA, and I had to say to him, I said, you know, the MICA is parallel and complementary, it's not competitive, it's not contrary, there's nothing happening in the, in the one that hurts the other, they're, they're really tracking quite much, so on the same page, so I, you know, but there was some crabiness at the AMC about MICA.
Which is sad, and I think we have to remember, and AMC obviously had a been in Ramsey, and Anoka are part of that group, where in MICA, they're not. So, every now and then, there are some diverging interests, and we care about both, but... That's where sometimes we're picking and choosing which priority we, as Scott County, support more because of that difference. It's a true difference, and that's why we still need MICA and not just AMC.
For sure. And both, both parties were in the room at that particular time, so that's, that's the important piece of that.
Anoka has been sitting in on the MICA.
Right, yes.
So, they, they were invited. I don't know, I don't think Hannah and Ramsey were, though.
There's some interesting dynamics at play, so it was kind of, you know, everyone was in the same fishbowl. It was, it was, okay, as long as we're all talking and in the same fishbowl, and yes, there might be some little tweaks here and there, but you used the word crabiness, so let's go with that, just different, differing opinions that are kind of bubbling up to the surface, but it's important that we're, this is a big issue. This is a big issue, and we just need to make sure we're getting to that tip of the spear. I don't know if Leslie was going to add to that, or maybe your...
No, I was just going to say, it was actually Anoka that raised the question, and it had partially to do with their participation in MICA, which had become a concern, but I thought the discussion was really good, and it ended with, we're all in alignment and working towards the same thing.
So much so, I got her all choked up over that, so.
I see that. It's emotional.
Yeah, it's very, yes, it is, it is, it is, no doubt. All kinds of other things talked about there, but we'll leave that one. And then, November 2nd, Prior Lake hosted an open house for annexation down at Friendship Church. A lot of people coming to and fro. I talked to, the Township Chair was there, so I talked to him for quite a while. Not really sure where that's at. It sounds like there's maybe a letter going back out to the Township today. I was at Prior Lake City Council meeting last night, and that was a topic of discussion post-meeting, so hoping we can get everyone in the room and get this thing figured out. So, again, yeah, so that would have been, what, the 6th, last night in Prior Lake, which, which we did talk about that, but also, they did their annual, their newly annualized Core McQuestion Award winner, and that was Kathy Dawson. So, I know, I know when Woody Spitzmuller won, we had to call him now Sir Woody Spitzmuller, so I'm not sure how that designation now works for Kathy, so we'll find out, so that concludes my report.
Okay, but things are, with that Spring Lake Pilot thing, they're not moving tanks into the area, so we're not to that point yet.
I felt some rumbles. I don't know what that was, I don't know what that was.
I thought you were going to get that solved.
I was, you know, Peacemaker was there, I'm not sure if it worked. We'll see.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Breckie.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. October 17th, Commissioner Brennan and I met with Health and Human Services Director Barb Dolph for our loosely monthly meeting. October 23rd, we had the Joint Board meeting with our board and the Shakopee School District. October 24th, Law Library Board meeting. Just, just really a lot of great outreach happening with the Law Library. I hope you've noticed that Ally, you know, kind of one-woman show over there, she's out in the community much more, she's serving a lot of our inmates over at the jail, she has a lot of walk-in citizens who just need legal help, so she's, she's really expanding the reach of the Law Library and doing a great job. October 24th was Chair-Vice Chair meeting. Also, October 24th, Scott County Mental Health Local Advisory Committee meeting. The subject of this month's meeting was the JAF, and so had a great presentation on, on the JAF, the current, current uses of it, the ongoing work to always do a better job with the kids that are there and, and help them, whether they're there for three days or six months, you know, get some skills and, and do better. October 24th, 25th, had my NACO Human Services and Education Committee monthly meeting, just to talk about federal policies. just to talk about federal policies. I think it was the day, the day of the speaker being announced, so there was a lot of uncertainty, and we'll work, we'll work now that we know what's going on there in DC a little bit to be proactive and defensive on some of those changes that will impact our folks. October 25th, had a Head Start audit call for the CAP Agency, for the Governing Board, just a regular audit to just talk about making sure that Head Start and what's going on with Head Start via CAP is, is utilizing the CAP Governing Board appropriately and that we're well aware of what's happening there. So I think, I think we passed that kind of thing. October 25th was also our Scott County Association, Township Association Fall Meeting. At that meeting, the Township Association did vote to forward the question about the ownership and major maintenance of bridges, MinDOT bridges over trunk highways as, as a scale priority. So good discussion where there was at least some, some common agreement. And November 3rd, I was able to participate sometime, some of the time virtually in the Scale Executive Committee meeting. Otherwise, I've been sick and on vacation.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Brennan.
Thank you. October 17th, I attended the groundbreaking for the amphitheater in Shakopee. Huge, huge, huge construction site and a lot of work that's going on there. October 23rd was the joint workshop with Shakopee School District. October 24th, I had a meeting with Sheriff Henan. October 25th, I attended the Township Association meeting, and that's already been talked about. October 30th, I attended the AMC District 10 meeting, and Commissioner Beer spoke about that. November 3rd, I had a meeting with Administrator Vermillion. And November 3rd, I had a meeting with Julie Seeger from the CDA. One of the commissions that I've been appointed to is the Live, Learn, and Earn Housing Commission, and that's something that hasn't met officially since October 22. And I'm hoping that during our workshop for planning, we can talk about housing, talk about housing committees and the importance of having input, having community input on housing, especially with the one that is coming into our, into this county, both in human services and with development. So I'm hoping that we have a conversation about that in November 17th. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. And when is the, when's that amphitheater going to open up?
Oh, 2025, I believe, is the estimation. So it was, it's interesting, just the water, the water filtration area for a storm and sewer, I mean, that's a huge hole. So it's, it's going to be just an amazing asset to this community.
Okay, get your lighters.
Yeah.
Good deal. Okay, for my report, on the 17th, I met with Lori Houston, Employee Relations, on a few things. On the 18th, Insurance Committee. The 23rd, met with our administrator. After that, we had the WMO, and then the Shakopee School Board meeting. 24th was Chair-Vice Chair. 25th, we had a mosquito control meeting, and we actually did hire our administrator for that, our executive director. And that night, we had a township meeting with the townships. I thought that went very well, and it kept it within an hour, so that was pretty good. Met with Cedar Lake Chair on some roads out there, and the shearing of roads between them and New Market Township, and, yeah. And then Vermillion River Joint Powers met after that, and Elko and New Market, we had our quarterly meeting. Everything's going, seems pretty good out there. They're on the water bottling plant, they're still waiting for the appropriation permit, I believe, with the DNR. I don't believe it has ever taken this long to get an appropriation permit.
Interesting.
From, and it's just kind of baffling, anyhow. And then the 27th, I filled in for Barb at the Workforce Investment Board, the WIB, which went very well. It was nice seeing some folks I haven't seen for a number of years, and things are going very well there. And I remember when I came in in '09, and the unemployment was like 10%, and now it's like 3%, so it's, it's not as much gloom and doom as it was back then. And then last night, Prior Lake had their, one of their two monthly meetings, and they talked about their budget a little bit there, and then I, I actually had to get to Credit River, and they were starting to talk about the township annexation there, and so I missed that. And then Cedar Lake, we had their monthly meeting, and we, so I talked about, we kind of, they brought in some former township supervisors that had been there from years ago, and some people who had done the roads out there, you know, because there's some dispute as to who's been taking care of the New Market side and the Cedar Lake side road of these, of these roads, these shared roads that go right down the township lines, and so anyhow, we're going to try to get that all straightened out here at some point. And just as a side note, I get these emails from some state senators or reps and some congressional people, and one of the state reps had a email that said, you know, watch out, you know, for county schools and cities raising their taxes this year. And I said, I said to myself, and I started just doing a little bit of quick math, that, you know, between income tax and sales tax and gas tax and tabs and fees, I'm probably paying four or five times as much to the state as I'm paying to all those other three entities. You know, it's funny, because that same state had a $17.5 billion surplus and, you know, use that and more. And then there was, on the Congress side, they, now the congressperson is going to actually try to get the border crisis solved when it was kind of getting solved already. So it's like, I don't, I don't get it. So anyhow, just pointing out because it's just funny how people try to take credit or remove themselves from situations. Anyhow, Leslie, is your voice well enough to give us a report?
We will give it a shot here. Just a reminder that we're closed Friday in honor of Veterans Day, folks out there. We are closed on the 10th. We have a work session following this, which was on the ordinance for the Housing Trust Fund, our legislative priorities for 2024, and the third quarter financial update and the HHW assessment, which we had agreed to bring back for a review annually. And then we've added the Metropolitan's Council Governance questions to that. And that, following the work session, we're all invited to attend the Veterans Lunch after that and share in that meal with them. So that's my report.
Good deal, thank you. Mr. Horstvar, do we have a reason to...
We do not.
We do not, okay. With that, again, we're going to have a little workshop after this, and then the Veterans Lunch. And I would look for a motion to adjourn, and there is a motion, is there a second?
A second.
And a second, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Posed? We are adjourned.